I'm going to call the city council meeting on March 13th to order. We're going to begin with an invocation by our city clerk, Lisa.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful evening, bringing this great group of people together. Please bless our council and our mayor, and look over the people of our great city, and let us all come together and make good and wise decisions. In your name I pray, and we pray together, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Under police, we have a proposed ordinance number 2023-085. Police Department is asking that that be removed tonight so that we can discuss a little more and maybe reconsider at a later time.
Okay, so we might depart to another agenda. All right, thank you, and with that, agenda's approved. We have minutes, number 2023-04-RG from the February 27th meeting.
Second.
Motion and a couple of seconds. Any discussion? You want to just pick one? I think Teddy had the motion.
Connie has a second.
Connie has a second? Okay. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Most passes. Under presentation and awards, we have one presentation from the Madison Police Department. Chief Andy, would you like to come forward?
Actually, we're going to have two promotions ceremony. One is for Communications Manager, and one is for Police Sergeant. So, first, this time could I have Daniel Weaver and family come up, please? So, in November of last year, we were left a little bit in the lurch, so we thought, when our longtime Communications Manager Kathy Cook retired. Kathy took with her an awful lot of experience, and left us a little uneasy. So, we began looking for a new Communications Manager, and I'm happy to report that we found one who can not only step into Kathy's shoes, but can take us into the future. And what we decided on was Daniel Weaver. So, Daniel began his career with the Police Department in 2008. He's held the position of dispatcher for eight years, and as a dispatch supervisor for 12 years. He's a Certified Communications Training Officer, and App Code 911 Center Supervisor certified. Now, we had a very, you know, a very strict competition, and he was up against some very tough and very well-qualified competitors. But Daniel seemed to have the vision that we were looking for, carrying the department into the future. So, at this point, Daniel, congratulations. All right, also, as we are increasing the staff of our Police Department to match the growth of the city, I asked for, and City Council was gracious enough to grant an extra sergeant's position. This allowed us to fill a very important role in rebuilding our traffic unit, and having the traffic sergeant assigned to that, which left us one sergeant short on the street, and allowed us to have another sergeant's promotional ceremony. Again, we had a very tough competition. We put together a very realistic and very tough process, and I want to say that the candidate who came out on top, Jackson Colby Presnell, not only did well, but really, out of the two competitions that we've held, he really set a new standard. It's going to be tough for that standard to be beaten. So, if I could, ask for Colby and family to come up, please. Colby began his career with the Madison Police Department in August of 2015. Since then, he's worked in various assignments in patrol and the training division. He served as a field training officer for six years, probably the toughest and most important position on the Police Department, by the way. And also, has, for the past five years, served on a department SWAT team. He's a recipient of the Officer of the Year Award in 2017. Colby? His father, Captain Presnell, from the Athens Police Department, will be pinning on his badge.
Good time to stick him and get him back for all those years.
I just have to say, I've known Colby since he was in elementary school, and I could not be more proud of him right now. He has always been just the best person and has the best heart, and I'm so proud of you, babe.
You're welcome. Congratulations, and thank you. Before we begin public comments, the mayor has an announcement that he has promised for this evening, so he's going to go ahead and make that.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of comments here for the city manager piece of this, and so I wanted to go ahead and give you guys the information, so before you come up, you'd already know what was going on. So, we just put out a press release, but the first paragraph of that says, "The City of Madison, with the order of the probate judge, has set a date for voters to decide the future of Madison's municipal form of government. The special election will be held Tuesday, May 9th, with voters utilizing their regular local election polling places, again, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m." We want to thank Judge Barger and Judge Woodruff for their diligence in making sure that the group who filed the petitions met the criteria that they had given for eligible signatures. We've done a couple of things. One, we've put together a website or information on what the vote looks like, what's actually on the ballot, what a yes vote means, what a no vote means. You can find that at madisonal.gov backslash council manager vote. So, that will be out there. In addition to that, we know that there's probably going to be several questions that we don't have answered, that you may want questions answered on. If you have questions, if you don't find the information that you need, you can send an email to thecity@communications@madisonal.gov, and we'll be able to get those answered for you if we have the ability to answer those. So, that's the basic information on that, and I'll probably finish a little bit more once we get done with public comments, when it's my time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Now, we're going to open for public comments. All comments? All comments are limited to three minutes. As a reminder, please go to the podium and speak directly into the microphone, so people at home can hear, and closed captions will work. First, state your name and your council district or neighborhood. You no longer need to state your home address. Address your remarks to me as City Council President. The council will not enter into dialogue at this time. This section of the agenda is for you, the public, to inform us, the City Council, about your views. If you have any questions, we will ask staff to address them at an appropriate time after the meeting. We've had a number of comment cards turned in, so we will begin with the comment cards. And the first person is Robert Retch.
How's that? Can you hear me? Thank you. Robert Retch, District 4, Greg Shaw, Mel DeBrookway. I came here not to complain to you folks, but to thank you. I want to thank you for fiscal policies over the last 10 years that have placed my wife and myself $15,000 additional, additionally in debt, as well as every other couple in the City of Madison. I also like to thank you for the poorly maintained roads that we, I have to drive on, like Bolsh, Mill Run, Mill Road, Sullivan, Eastview, and a bunch of other ones. It's really substandard to the other places that I've lived in, like California, Florida, and Pennsylvania. Lastly, I owe you a thanks for awakening a sleeping bunch of passive citizens in Madison like myself. I was very passive up until the last year, and now have begun to become involved in local politics. There's a growing number of us who are paying more attention to this body and what it does, and because of this awakening, I predict that there will be some challengers to your seats in the upcoming election. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next comment from Kathy Patrick.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Patrick. I live in St. Mill Estates in District 6, and I wanted to talk about the City Manager issue. Sharing one side of an issue is not an objective way of presenting information to help citizens make an informed decision. When doctors recommend surgery, they explain the benefits and the risks to their patient. This allows the patient to make an informed decision. Without understanding the pros and cons regarding the City Manager issue, how can we, as citizens, make an informed and educated vote? At the last council meeting, residents asked the city to address questions regarding this issue to mitigate arguing and vitriol between residents. Within two days, the website was updated with the same pro-City Manager talking points given during last year's transition meetings. The city's update actually omitted the one downside that was documented last year by the City and Transition Committee. The downside was by Sam Gaston, the City Manager of Mountain Brook, who was interviewed by the committee on October 2021. The recap note on the website states, "He shared the one negative or downside to the Council for, Council Manager form of government is when a non-professional is hired," citing examples he had seen where someone was hired who just needed a job instead of a certified and trained professional. I've found several downsides, but I'd like to highlight one more from the same City Manager, Sam Gaston. This one's not on the city website or the committee report. It's from the Homewood Star dated July 30th, 2020, regarding his presentation to the City of Homewood. "The only downside," he said, "is that it could affect voter turnout in municipal elections. Residents in cities with a City Manager government are less likely to vote in municipal elections than residents in cities with a Mayor-Council government, as per research by the American Society of Public Administration. Could it be that voters feel disenfranchised with a City Manager because they have less say in how the city is managed? This issue of City Manager was brought before the citizens in a much more objective way in 2015. Three presentations can be found on the city's website by searching Governance Committee. On the whole, these presentations are balanced, providing reasons for and against changing our government, but not this time around. Back to the doctor analogy, if a doctor wanted to perform surgery on me but refused to tell me the risks of that surgery, I wouldn't trust him. I'd want another doctor. This is why I'm one of the growing number of residents in Madison who will vote no on City Manager. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Next is Bernadette Mayer.
Good evening. I'm Bernadette Mayer. I live in Heatherwood, District 5, Renee Bartlet. Number 1, City Council Mayor truly listening to residents enacting in a trustworthy manner. 1A, last council meeting time was spent saying you are listening. 1B, restore public comment time at city council meeting to five minutes. 1C, November 28th, Huntington Chase resident requested sidewalk areas to connect neighborhoods and cross over Mill County Line Road, which impacts District 1-4. Anything planned? Maybe not, when roads need to be wide or in need for a traffic circle, but any safe other crossing plans on County Line Road for pedestrians? There was a second pedestrian death, and the city talks about the importance of safety and, as well as recreation. 1D, last council meeting, Mayor Finley commented that 10% of residents are doing 90% of the work. Madison has over 26,000 voters. 1% is 260 people. I object to multiple appointments and positions of influence with a small circle of people. Number 2, I object to the organization, structure, and use of Madison Visionary Partners. Chamber of Commerce has its own board. There's no need to have a layer of influence between the Chamber and the city. Item 3, again, I comment on readily seen information on the city website and need for 3A, updating information. An example, low current student population growth. This school year, about 180 students, per the mayor's newsletter. The study on population growth in schools needs to adjust to current information. Item 4, again, addressing current city debt. How it is being paid down, along with other city expenditures? Overall, how is capital improvement are being completed? We, the public, have only heard fleeting comments about debt paydown. Since I still have some more time, I will comment a little bit more on 1C. When the Huntington Chase resident talked on November 28th about sidewalks, Mayor Finley immediately said, "We don't have money for that. Sidewalks are too expensive." And it's like, you can't find money for something that improves recreation, perhaps safety, and allowing people to utilize our city streets, you know, our city recreational areas by having connecting sidewalks. I just am appalled by some of the big expenditures the city easily makes, and yet, they're not really listening to what the current neighbors and neighborhoods want. There's a lot of information I haven't been able to get to on this. I think that there's members on the Planning Committee. For example, when I'm talking about the circles of influence, it's almost like influence peddling and friendly cooperation between individuals and developers and following a playbook to how this city can just grow super, super fast without--
Thank you, Ms. Mayer.
--cost benefit analysis.
The next person is Elizabeth Namati.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Namati. I live in District 3. And first, I would like to thank you for your service in government, and it's very important. I, too, am one of the large number of citizens opposed to the Council Manager. A lot of us are unhappy about the development and the debt. And when proponents of the City Manager say there will be more continuity and efficiency, I do not think that's a good thing in this case. We don't want continuity if there's reckless development and debt, and we don't want it done more efficiently. And here's why getting a City Manager will make the situation worse, in my opinion. Right now, the structure is set up so that if the mayor has an idea that is not good, the council can vote it down. And if the council wants to pass an idea that's not good, the mayor can veto it. If the council actually thinks that idea is really good, they can override the mayor's veto. They balance each other out. They also know they have to answer to the voters. The mayor has to answer to the whole community, and the council members each answer to their own district. This can slow down the adoption of bad ideas. It might slow down the good ideas, too, but it's more important to slow down bad ideas, so it's worth it. And it looks inefficient, but that's okay. We don't want to be efficient at doing a bad thing. Besides, today's good idea could be tomorrow's bad idea. History has a lot of examples. This is a genius system that spreads out power. The fact that separate parts of the government have to agree means there's a check and a restraint on getting too much power. Voters currently get to vote for both their representative on the council and for the mayor. If we remove the mayor as someone who can veto the council, we're giving away a major part of the power that we have as voters. If we think that debt or anything else is a bad idea, we lose a lot of power to oppose it. I will vote no on the Council Mayor, the Council Manager form of government, and I hope everybody else will, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Tiffany Knox. Oh, Knox, sorry. Missed that.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Knox. I live in District 1, Mara's District. Today, I came to read directly from your own website, slideshows from the Government's Committee presentation from 2015 that Catherine referred to. It shows negative aspects of changing our form of government that you guys deliberately omitted from your website that's up there currently. In Presentation Number 2, it states that only 3% of Alabama cities utilize the City Manager form of government because the people want to elect the one that's calling the shots. I checked this figure to find that that percentage has not changed in the last eight years. In fact, Fairhope just also voted no onto City Manager in November, when this same proposal was brought up in their city. Only about a dozen cities in Alabama use a City Manager form of government. Surprisingly, some of our biggest cities, Montgomery, Birmingham, Mobile, and Hoover, are not among them. This presentation points out that with our current form of government, we have a separation and balance of powers, like Beth talked about. It allows our citizens to choose the mayor/CEO every four years. It quotes, "With a City Manager, the citizens lose their right to choose their CEO every four years. Four City Council members choose the CEO." Our country and Constitution were founded upon separation of powers in government for the people. The city website states that checks and balances will occur under the City Manager, but it does not tell us how. Please add that. It also quotes, "We do not need the additional cost of another layer of government." As a side note, since we, since 2015, we have added a city administrator, and this has helped Madison's growth management and lessened the workload of our mayor. Is that not good enough? Our form, our current form of government is working. Madison's growth and development has been beautiful. In Presentation Number 3, it brings up the issue that Decatur held a special election in 2010, and their population voted yes to have a City Manager, but there was a lawsuit filed that ultimately kept it from being implemented. It cost Decatur taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. Will Madison end in a lawsuit, too? How much will that cost taxpayers? It also points out two parts of the law that conflict with each other that could lead to conflict and lawsuits. They cite Attorney General's Office, Alabama League of Municipalities, and Attorney Perry Rokemore as their sources for that. Why would we want to create conflict and create a potential lawsuit? It continues. If citizens--
Thank you, Ms. Knox. Your time is up.
Thank you.
And our final comment card is from Arthur S. Kirkendall.
Evening, Members of Council, chair. I have some technical questions. I'm in District 7, by the way. I have some technical questions about the referendum. Section 1143A of the Code of Alabama says the City Manager shall be an officer of the city. So, specifically, will the City Manager be an employee or a contractor? I think that's probably an attorney question.
We're, we're going to take down all your questions and write them down, because we don't want you to lose your time.
Okay.
If you can tell us what your questions are, our city attorney will write them down.
All right. If the, if, if the City Manager is a city employee, will he or she be on a contract or just serving strictly at discretion of council? In Class 6 and Class 7 cities, they're specifically allowed to have the City Manager on contract, but that contract is managed by the council. Would the City Manager have the power to hire and fire the police chief, fire chief, city clerk, and city attorney? And as a Class 8 city currently, the first three positions are the purview of the City Council, and under, I believe, a 2003 ordinance, the city attorney's job is also hired by the City Council. So, the question is, do those fall under the City Manager's discretion, or does that stay with council? Okay, would the City Manager be eligible to participate in the state retirement system? Okay. Right now, the mayor is not on the state retirement system, and would having a City Manager on the retirement system cause extra costs for the city over and above the higher salary that you're likely to pay a City Manager? And the last question, and this is something for the council. If this referendum passes, would the council appoint a City Manager, or would you wait until the new council is sworn in? You have, the option is there to do it either way, and you can also appoint a temporary City Manager for a term not exceeding four months. That's, that's all the questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any responses?
Well, we're not going to respond during public comments, but we are going to let our attorney look at that, and then the mayor's office will figure out which questions we can answer on the website. We may have some answers. We may, may not have all the answers, but we can--
Great, thanks.
But thank you for your questions. We have written them down. Okay, those are all the comment cards, but any other member of the public can address the council, so please come forward. Yes, sir? Okay.
Jennifer Coe, District 5. Council President, my topic will be conflicts of interest with the governance transition and the governance transition team. We still do not know what is broken with the Mayor-Council government that we have. An article in the Madison Record dated January of 2022, and also, there was one that was dated in July of 2022, says the Council Manager Plan will reduce the risk of a full turnover of City Council. The voters should ask themselves if that is a bad thing. The article further states, "In addition, the setup allows for a potential for fresh perspectives from the new council members every two years," because they recommended staggered elections. Are we going to have staggered elections every two years? Okay, I guess so. The article further states that this form of government removes fraternizing and favoritism. How is that possible realistically? When the people on Madison Forward PAC, the government transition team members are all going to gain or be beneficiaries of this governance transition, they found nothing negative in their study? Of course not, because it benefits them. Specifically, the member is attorney for Ball Corporation, and his husband is a major shareholder in Ball Court, which is owners of the Trash Pandas. In fact, the idea of more business-like government really looks more like a euphemism for business-friendly. I mean, there's a, there's banker, big business, metro, and so restaurant industry, former city administrator, is stacked against the regular taxpayer, the regular citizen. This just looks like a consolidation of power, not a solution to unfettered growth or rampant corruption. In fact, the Council Manager government is recommended for high-growth cities because it puts all the decision-making power into the hands of an unelected bureaucrat who is not accountable to the voters. They're accountable to the council members. Council members of recent history have voted for baseball and economic development. This is not what taxpayers voted for. We're, you know, okay, we don't, we want services. We want y'all to provide services, not necessarily economic development. And why is it Madison Forward PAC, Madison Visionary Partners, and Madison Governance Transition Team, they all have representatives-- they all have representatives on there of people who are benefiting from this change of government? And that should not take precedence over delivering services to the taxpaying voter. The governance transition team unanimously approves consolidating the government.
You know, Coe, we've got your comments. Sir, would you like to go next? I saw your hand up.
I'll give you the card here.
After you're done?
Yes.
Can you tell us your name and your district?
I'm Jonathan Pierce. I'm from Mountain Brook of Madison. Teddy and I know each other. A city council that has not exhibited any of the intention of protecting homeowners from the intrusion of businesses in our backyards, who has not protected homeowners from water runoff issues caused by businesses, who are more concerned with potential tax revenues than operating within them, within their budget, and building debt burdens that leave our, that lower our city credit ratings from A-plus to A-minus or lower, should not expect citizens to trust the council has our best interests at heart. It represents yet another layer of bureaucracy to silence citizen oversight of the city that the citizens own. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Sarah Parker from Mrs. Spears, District Two. I'm just asking for a different date that you would move it because all of the residents that have come up today have expressed a number of concerns that you have not addressed. You have not listed any of the cons on the website. There may have been a few, but not very many. Will the mayor be on the state retirement system? Why did Decatur fail? And I believe that it's been brought up three or four times, two or three? I can't remember. Here in Madison, why has that been up so many times? Why has it failed? And I would ask that the citizens be allowed to email questions to individual reps and that you guys can give the pros and cons to your individual constituents and citizens. So I think there's so many unanswered questions that all of you have failed to produce answers to that I think it would be highly, just, I guess, bad is a good word, just awful of you guys to turn this up for a vote when you have not presented all of the evidence. May ninth is pretty quick. May ninth is pretty quick for it just to come out and bam, there it is. Why not June? Why not July? Give all of us a chance to get all of the evidence first. Why, what are the cons of it? Unless some of you can answer that right now. Mrs. Bartlett, you're president. I think you should answer some of the cons for some of the citizens of your city. Okay, I would ask that you hold it back a little bit, and you guys are all up for election too, so hold it back a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Margie Daly, Karen's District. First, in response to the mayor stating at the last council meeting, "I only speak at councils and run away is unbecoming and ingenuous." I've been to your office numerous times. At my age, I choose how my time can be best utilized in keeping Madison a great place to live. I'm confused on the ballot language and incorporation of the city. We were incorporated around 1869 as Madison Station. Madison annexed land in the 1980s and incorporated as Madison City, from my research. I could be wrong. In 2019, the state law 11-40-6 was updated. It states, "All cities must update their class to the population which makes us a Class Four." It's 1140-6. I'm highly confused on what class our city is and how tonight's resolution is written. Deliberately confusing voters from the start on this proposed change. Just more reasons to vote no. No way, city manager. No more keeping our tax dollars all in the family. Sad for the greed of the few. Construction sites. Our city is torn up with construction sites, yet there's no workers out there working. Maybe we should stop issuing approvals till at least one is completed. Used and Mill Road is a mess, unsecured, and putting up sandbags, opening manholes. It flooded the covert, going through the cemetery and flooded the graveyard. It tore down trees and headstones. I have pictures directly caused by the construction sites, neglect of our great city with no respect for the historic cemetery or city hall. Terry Johnson had a good show last council. She neglected to address collecting signatures on the petition on school grounds, in council chambers, and during planning meetings, which is in 1717-5. She forgot to read the subsection A and C in the law. She blatantly did the Madison shuffle. Will we just be bulldozers like much of our beautiful city? Another 175,000 on top of the 37 million for the flyovers. Will there be additions every council agenda? Our debt, 343 million dollars plus, is ridiculous. Vote no on the current administration selecting a ruler. Let's continue to allow the citizens to vote and elect a person who runs our city. Let's keep our separation of powers and executive branch of government.
Thank you, Ms. Daly, your time is up.
Vote no.
Would anyone else like to address the council? Please come forward. Have we got everybody? All right, we are going to close public comments and move to the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee has reviewed all the periodic and current business paid and found everything to be in order that I'd like to move to approve.
Motion in a second. Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Would you want to highlight some of the appropriations?
Absolutely. So five of the appropriations tonight, again funded by council, outside appropriations, the Chamber of Commerce of Huntsville, Madison County, the Partnership for Drug-Free Community, the Riley Center, the United Way of Madison County, and the U.S. Space and Rocket Center. So I know we have several of the representatives out there. We thank you guys for what you're doing. You know, we talk about communities and how the city isn't responsible and can't take care of everything. A lot of these groups pick up the pieces for that, and we really appreciate y'all doing that.
Okay, thank you very much. And Presentation of Reports. Oh, and did anybody want to highlight the donation too? I wanted to make sure.
We also had two donations to the Senior Center.
Thank you, and thank you for those. Okay, and Presentations and Reports. Mayor Finley, you're up first.
All right, and I'll start by asking council for approval of Resolution Number 2023-108-R, Authorization of an Agreement with Aldat for Reimbursement for Inspection Services for I-565 Overpass Project, up to $175,000 to be paid by the 2022 bond issue.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions?
I do have a couple of questions for you, Mayor. For this number, is this the total cost that we will be, that Aldat will ask for for the services provided?
It is, it is the not-to-exceed number. So yes, that would be the total, the most that we would pay for their oversight.
Okay, I didn't see any timeline in it. Is it, is there a time? Or is it till it's completed and it's theirs?
Till the, till the overpass is completed, yes.
Okay, so there'll be no other cost? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second, ready for vote. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember, Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, and I'll give a couple more pieces of information, and I know a lot of the questions, especially what the former Mayor Kirkendall asked or more detailed, and we'll try to get those added. First, we're not voting on any type of staggered terms. So when that's in there, wherever that was discussed in any of the meetings or discussions, it wasn't something that was, it was discussed, but it's not part of what we'll be talking to or voting on. The answer to the question of why, May ninth, it is the latest date on a Tuesday that we can have the election to be legal. It is a requirement. So once the citizens obtained the signatures and the probate judge verified those signatures, there are timeframes set in place, regardless of whether this council wants to move forward or not, and the probate judge wants to move forward or not. It is a requirement. And so that requirement then gives our community the ability to vote. One of the things that we tried to do on the website that I mentioned, which again is madisonal.gov/councilmanagervote, is a flowchart of what your vote of yes or no means. It's the ballot language. If you vote yes to change to that form of government, it tells you what that means. If you vote no, it obviously stays the way it is, but the difference between the two of those. And it's a visual representation of what a yes vote or a no vote means. We then have several frequently asked questions, and that's all that's on, if I'm not mistaken, that respective URL that I'm giving you. Additional questions can be given to the communications@madisonal.gov to be able to answer a lot of what you're asking. I don't think we'll have all of the answers, but we'll have as many of them as we can to get you the information. And I'll end by, from my standpoint, saying how happy I am that we'll have this vote and that many of you are engaged. It's good to have that many folks that are looking at this because this body will not be the same one that's here in 2025, regardless of whether this vote passes or doesn't. The goal of this, as we put in the press release, is to make sure that the mayor and council here have, or that we as a city have the best representation going forward that we can of a town that's now 60,000 managing a $60 million budget. So happy that that's out there, that we'll have this vote. It will be good to see our citizens engage in a positive or negative. This has happened before in our city, and when the citizens get to vote, they usually get it right. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. District Number Two.
Sorry. I guess I was waiting on Maura. So first of all, well, the only thing I really have was I wanted to make sure to do a shout-out to Public Works in their hard work with the storm cleanup. They did an excellent job. I know that City Hall was closed one day because of some trees down online and such. But I just wanted them to know that we realize how hard they worked, and they were out there in the middle of it, cleaning up before it was even fully over. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of y'all. And that's all I have.
Thank you. District Three.
So I too want to thank Public Works and Police for being out the other night. You know, it's a great community to live in and to know that those things are taken care of. We don't have to call anybody. They show up, they do it. You know, they know there's a storm coming. There's a process, and they go through it. So I'd like to thank Public Works on that. And I do want to address the vote somewhat to the extent of what we can and can't tell you, okay? First of all, as I've stated many times, I'm glad a couple of people from my district are here. It is our job to either put it on the ballot or not put it on the ballot. That's our job. As to how we're going to vote, that's just like your vote. It's a personal vote, and we're bound not to really be able to influence anyone's vote. I mean, that's by law. We can't do that. So if you want the information, I'll give you as much information as I can give you. But the information I'm going to be able to give you most likely will be on the website. So, but please call me, email me, come see me after the meeting. I'll be glad to talk with you guys. That's all I've got.
Thank you. District Four.
I just want to kind of affirm a point that Paul was saying about the time to vote. If you look at Section 1143A-3, it says that after the probate judge approves it, you have not less than 40 days or more than 90 days for the election, unless it's within 120 days of a special election. So this is set not by us, but by this section of code. It's talking about needing certain services provided and not economic growth. That's how we get money to provide services is through economic growth. When I ran the first time, I said, "I think the problem with Madison is everybody lives in Madison and spends their money in Huntsville." There wasn't anywhere to eat outside of a fast food restaurant. There was nowhere to buy clothes. You couldn't buy a car. All of our tax money went to Huntsville. So when we started, so when we started looking, we said, "If we're ever going to have money to spend on roads and a better way of living, we have to have our residents spend their money here." So with that, you have to start off with a little bit of debt to be able to pay that off, to be able to have that money. So we hired a firm out of Montgomery that is very well-known on economic growth and handling of money. And we sat down with them numerous times, and they've guided us to long-term success. And I do not apologize for anything this council's done as far as trying to provide the best economic growth that will provide services in the future for Madison. So I look all the time at the decisions some of the past councils made when they didn't grow. Like, we could have that Home Depot, Academy, Aldbach, all that up there, but they would not take any debt. Everybody, they shot away from it. And so now all that goes to Huntsville. But if we'd have taken on a little bit of debt 25 years ago, all that up there on the North Side of Madison would be ours. But we ran away from it. So that's what we continue to look at is, is it makes sense or not makes sense? And it does on paper, so we've moved forward with it. So that's really all, all that I have to say.
And then you have one resolution, I think, on the financial services agreement?
Yep, 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 yes. So this is to renew our financial agreement with Synovus Bank. We put out a request for bid on all these services, and they came back with the best rates. So we're going to stay with them. And so with that, I move to approve.
Okay, motion in a second. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, just a quick comment on that. You know, this is something that we've been trying to do for quite a long time. And basically what it is is, you know, we've been with Synovus for many, many years since I've been on council. And to make sure we're getting the best rates for our citizens, you know, one of the financial decisions, we did an RFP. We went out and said, "Okay, you know, can you provide us a better service for the same dollars or, you know, what have you?" Synovus came back, so it did two things. First of all, it did get us a better rate. Secondly, it holds them accountable, Secondly, it holds them accountable, and that was the whole purpose of it, and glad it worked out, and I appreciate everybody that did that.
Yeah, it took a lot of work too from finance and Roger to put all that together, and you guys and him, and let's put it out there because were it, would not, to another facility or organization received a bid, it would have taken a lot of work, and we were willing to do that. The good news for the city is we got an incredible number that helps us a lot financially, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. District six.
All right, well, I'll start with the same topic as everyone else. Some people have asked me to vote no tonight, to go ahead with this. To me, that would be silencing the voice of the people. I really believe that this is the opportunity for the city to decide what kind of governance you want, not what we decided, nothing. It's in the people's hands now, and I think that's absolutely the best place for it. I am excited about that. I am excited to see people so involved. I love seeing the truck outside. I love seeing shirts. I'm not saying which side. I'm like Teddy. I make my decision, and y'all will make yours too. But I am thrilled that this has come to the voice of the people, and that's really where it belongs. I really do hope that within the community, there are different groups that have open houses or town halls that get up and say, this is what we want, this is why, or this is why it's really bad. Because then you'll end up with more informed people, right? If you say, this is what I believe, but you don't get out there and campaign, like we campaigned, then it's not getting out to others who also want to be informed. So I really do hope that there is a lot of discussion. I really do hope that there are meetings that are led not by us but by the people because it really is your vote. It's your time to have a say. And so, on to other things. Madison Street Festival, we are still in full swing for sponsorship drive. This is a great opportunity for the local businesses to partner with the Madison Street Festival to create a fun, free-to-the-public event. It's your time to show what you have to the community through a sponsorship, what you have to offer to Madison. The sponsorship drive ends April first. Also, May fifteenth is the registration, open date for the street festival itself, all the food vendors and the businesses and that sort of thing. As far as Madison Police Citizens Advisory Committee, they had another excellent meeting the Tuesday right after our last meeting. They talked about if you have a complaint, if something has, if one of our officers has done something that you felt was out, was not professionally, they discuss what you do about that. Captain Cook did an excellent job of giving us an informational overview of what happens at that point. The department really does take each assertion of misconduct very seriously, and it investigates it thoroughly. So I wish to thank Captain Cook for doing that. That was excellent. Also, tomorrow evening, the Madison Police Citizen Committee is holding a special session to discuss rule changes. The public is welcome to attend this. The meeting will be at the library at six o'clock. But there's some discussion on whether we keep it as two years, four years, what they want to do as a committee. So if you're interested at all, because we are going to be in April, the present terms end for two, four, and six. So if you are interested in getting involved, please either come to the meeting, put in your application. But again, this is another way for community involvement, for you to be in charge of your community, it's your community. Also, on the eighth of April coming up is Easter egg hunt. I hope everyone attends. Again, that's a community thing. It's a time that the people can come together and have a good time and keep having that community relationship, which is such an important part of the city of Madison. The Partnership for a Drug-Free Community is having their winter board meeting at the Wellstone Emergency Services Facility. Both of these agencies are agencies that we have given appropriations to. So I will be attending that meeting to represent Madison. And for the last thing, I'm going to share what is going on with my personal life. I've always been open with this community. I've let you know how things stand with my husband and his battle with cancer. On March third, we found out the results of the latest PET scan. There are five tumors now. There's two in his liver, one in his lungs, one in his adrenal, and one down in the hip. So when the doctor notes it, he says, well, this could be worse. And you wonder how? Well, it's because now we do have radiation. The radiation doctor will take care of three of them, and then they'll have a specialist come in to take care of the liver. So we still have, we're still moving forward on this, but I share this just because you are family. That's how I look at the city of Madison, and that's why I talk so strongly about community and all of us representing it because we are family together, working together. So I share this because y'all are my family too, and I am so thankful for the kindness and the support that I am shown. And it is really nearly daily, people. It is just so amazing. So I just want to thank you for that, for moving forward, living life, living life as it comes, and trusting. And that is all I have for the night. Thank you.
Thank you. District number seven.
Yes, so I'll share everybody's comments on the city manager. I look forward to the vote and look forward to information getting out and folks becoming aware of what the pros and cons are and making your own decisions on that, just as I will as well. From the standpoint of things going on with the city, anybody wanting to come to Henson Board Meeting can do so this morning, or not this morning, Thursday morning at seven thirty, part of that group, and then Planning Commission is also this Thursday afternoon at five thirty, so that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, John.
I have just a few things. First, for district number five, let me cover the resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-ninety-five-dash-R, Designating Voting Delegates for the Alabama League of Municipalities Annual Convention. Mrs. Spears, Mr. Roblesky, and I will be attending. And the resolution before you names me as the voting delegate and Ms. Spears and Ms. Roblesky as alternate voting delegates. Represent that for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and second by Teddy. Motion by Mrs. Spears. Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. First, I'd like to thank everyone who applied for Board of Education. We have an opening, and we had some outstanding applicants. We hope to conduct those interviews when we return after spring break on the twenty-second during our work session, and so we will be announcing finalists soon for that. On February twenty-eighth, I attended a Madison Chamber Catalyst meeting at the YMCA. It was outstanding, discussing supply chain and labor shortage challenges by some experts, and I learned a lot from that meeting. I would encourage anyone to attend those. They are free and quarterly. Last Sunday, I attended a Girl Scout Cadet Troop meeting, helping them earn their democracy badge and finding common ground. And I presented them, after we covered local, state, and federal government, presented them some issues that we could debate and try to find common ground. And I let them vote on which issue they wanted to tackle. They decided to tackle the federal issue I presented, which was whether the federal government should ban TikTok. And that was a very interesting discussion with the cadets and their age group because they're very social media savvy. And so anyway, we had a great discussion, found some common ground, no resolutions. What gets discussed at Girl Scouts stays at Girl Scouts, but it was a rewarding experience, and I love being around young people. Speaking of that, I got to spend this last weekend in Alabaster at Thompson High School for the state's scholastic chess championship. We took sixty Madison City Chess League members there, competed statewide, won every championship section. Bob Jones High School is the state champion. Discovery Middle School is the state champion. We had Columbia Elementary win the primary championship, and Horizon Elementary win the elementary championship. So we're so excited to be able to have so many talented chess players, and I was so happy to volunteer my time with them this weekend. And Mayor, I think you had one other thing you wanted to add.
Well, I might add two more things. If Renee ever asks you to play any age group whatsoever, I don't care if they're five of her chess people, do not do it unless you know what you're doing. And real quickly, while I have a pretty good crowd here, we have several openings, especially for the summer, for kids and young adults and all kinds of folks when it comes to part-time lifeguards, seasonal temp lifeguards, and seasonal rec aids camp counselors. You can go to our website. We also have Field Operator Two for our Public Works Department. All of those are available, and one of the key things is for the seasonal rec aids and camp counselors, there's a lot of parents that utilize our summer camps for their children, which we're thrilled to have. Obviously, if we don't get the number of rec aids, there's a ratio that we have to have, so it's critical that we get the right people in there to help us with that. So a lot of jobs are available. You can go to our website, MadisonAL.gov, and look up those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We do not have any board committee appointments or public hearings this evening, so we will go to the department report, starting with engineering.
Good evening. First, I have resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-nine-eight-R, authorizing a professional services agreement with Barge Design Solutions for Engineering Design Services, Project twenty-three-dash-zero-one-two. That's Balch and Browns Ferry, the southern intersection of Balch and Browns Ferry Road. And this is in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-four-hundred dollars to be paid from Engineering Departmental Budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Any discussion or questions?
No, I just would like to add that there will be lights. There were some questions by a constituent, and that there will be lights in the roundabout, but it comes at a later date. Correct?
Right, so this proposal or the scope of work with a consultant doesn't include a lighting plan, but we usually coordinate that internally with the electric board or whoever we're dealing with to make sure that they're properly lit.
Right, so it will be coming, just to clarify.
Yes, the intersections will be lit, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Go ahead.
Okay, and then item B is Proposed Ordinance Number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-nine-nine. This is authorizing the transfer of city properties and the granting of utilities to Madison Utilities in relation to their Western Transmission Main Project. This is the first reading.
This is the first reading, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, sorry.
That's okay. Just clarification. What exactly is the Western Transmission Main Project?
These are, pardon?
Would you like me to tell you?
Yeah, go for it.
What it is, is we're, Madison Utilities is building a new line from the river and the treatment plant all the way into Madison to give more capacity so that as we grow and as we have grown, we have areas that don't have water pressure the way they need to and don't have the supply the way they need to. So this is a way to bring more of the water in and the wastewater out.
Okay, where exactly is this located?
It's miles and miles. It comes from Triana, or near Triana, all the way up across five, six, or under five-sixty-five and twenty, and goes north.
Okay, well, it talks about the Keene Water Plant. Where is that?
That's at the end of Pump Station Road, off of Gillespie South.
Yes, okay. Okay, I was just, you know, you have all those, nice to put it on a map, that's all.
Yeah, there's some plans in the packet that have the locations. It's a little bit hard to infer though from those plans.
If you're a legal surveyor, it was great.
That's what I'm saying. It's a little bit hard to infer because you have to kind of find some of those, excuse me.
Well, that's it. Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Fire and Rescue.
Evening. I just have one resolution for your consideration, number twenty-two-three-dash-ninety-one-R, authorizing an agreement with ESO for historical data access for a period of one year in the amount of five-hundred dollars to be paid from our budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second. Any questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Legal.
Good evening. Legal has prepared a resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-fourty-zero-four-nine-dash-R. This is for an approval of ballot language for the council manager, special elections set for May ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Just wanted to kind of reiterate some things that Mayor had said, that basically what this resolution is asking is basically a mandatory duty on the council to approve the ballot language that will actually be voted on. There's one other subrequirement that codes Section eleven-dash-fourty-three-A-dash-one-one requires, and that is that the council also has to approve whether, quote, whether the municipality shall continue with either four or six council members elected from six-member districts. So the ballot language that we have is basically pulled straight from statute with a little insertion that determines whether we do the four or the six. So this is the resolution that is before the council, and if I could probably read out the actual ballot itself, the proposed ballot language would be this. Shall the council manager form of government as provided by the Council Manager Act of nineteen-eight-two be adopted for the city of Madison consisting of seven members as follows? One member shall be the mayor elected at large, who shall be a voting member of the council, and six members shall be council members elected from single-member districts. And then there will be a mark, either yes or no. This is what is before the council, and this is what I've been asked to prepare for your consideration.
Okay, is there a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions for our attorney or?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that this is a vote only on the ballot language and the approval of the election on the ninth?
Absolutely. Nothing, the council's not taking any action tonight that would actually adopt, or no one would be making a decision here on the council as far as whether to adopt the council manager system. Basically, and I'm sure that you're aware, but just to clarify for all ears, once these petitions were submitted by outside parties to the probate, there are mechanisms set up by the statute that we have to abide by. Basically, once those petitions are submitted, there's ninety days that there has to be an election. Probate judge sets the election. Now we're just simply voting on whether we're going to be four or six districts and approving that ballot language. That will then be given to the voters for them to make the decision. So nothing here in this vote tonight on this resolution will approve this. It just pushes it for a vote for the public.
Thank you. And so the probate judge has already set the election. Where did that happen?
He set that by notice. I believe we received it Friday afternoon, and he did set it for May the ninth, which would be inside the ninety days statutorily. We have to do it either the first, I'm sorry, the second Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday of May, and as it turns out, that fourth Tuesday was outside of the ninety-day time limit. So with discussions with probate, we all agree that that would be the best day at the very end of the ninety-day period.
Once the requirements of the petition are satisfied by the probate judge and he sets the election, we don't have a choice. We have to do an election. That's the way the statute works.
That is correct.
Our question here is, do we go with four or six districts? And six would allow more representation.
That's really the only question for the council at this juncture.
There was a question asked during public comments about confusion on are we a Class Eight or a Class Four municipality? Can you explain why this particular language references Class Eight?
Yes, basically what you have is a statute that establishes the different classes of the municipalities as of the nineteen-seventy census. Well, you'd think that it makes sense that we would update the statute and we'd get to a point where years later, we can look at new census data. But as it stands, we are determined what class we are by that same nineteen-seventy census. So we are a Class Eight municipality. That really isn't up for debate. I know that our population has definitely grown vastly since nineteen-seventy, but as far as the statute is considered, we are, under Alabama law, a Class Eight municipality.
And that was determined in nineteen-seventy, from the nineteen-seventy census?
That is correct.
And that was our population at that time, even though it's not our population today?
And you'll find the same kind of creations with Hoover and cities like that. I think Hoover's still a Class Eight even though their population has exploded. So yes, it's all determined at that time, and there's lots of reasons for that. They would have to undo just a myriad of laws and regulations over the different cities and if you did in fact update it. So that's the reason why it's been kept in place.
Are there any other questions?
No, but if anybody wants the official case number from the probate court, it's case number seven-six-nine-eight-zero. Again, seven-six-nine-eight-zero.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, so everyone ready for a vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next?
Next, we have a resolution number twenty-two-three- Next, we have, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one zero one dash R. This is, uh, asking for approval of a joint purchasing agreement with the city of Huntsville. Uh, this would be for, uh, light-duty vehicles that would be purchased through, uh, Woody Anderson Ford. Uh, basically, they have agreed that they would allow us to do this. Uh, they have a long list of, uh, very specific pricing for vehicles through Woody Anderson, and, uh, through this agreement, we would be able to utilize those, those prices through their bid, their competitive bid that they've already had.
Okay.
May to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second by Mrs. Spears. Any discussion, question?
Just one question. What is considered a, uh, light vehicle?
Um, I think generally what you're going to find is that it, it's not going to be like a dump truck or, uh, like a squad car that's equipped for a, a chase or anything like that.
Okay.
Uh, I think that it's more kind of like, I think we have probably about fifteen, twenty different types of vehicles that are specifically named in, uh, in that bid. So what you're going to find is basically some, uh, some light trucks, uh, you're probably going to find several sedans, things of that nature. I, I'm not sure, I, I couldn't tell you precisely, uh, how to define it, but as my understanding, light duty is basically going to be not a dump truck, not a squad car, not a motorcycle, everything kind of in between.
After all, anything that they purchase is going to already have been budgeted. This helps with supply chain management. We simply can't get vehicles through our normal channels. And so everybody from recreation to public works to police to fire is in need of vehicles, uh, building, even, even IT. And so this gives us just one more avenue to go obtain the vehicles that you guys have already funded. So none of, we, we won't purchase anything that you guys haven't already approved.
No, I think it's great that we're doing that, so I just wondered whether it was going to include squad cars or not, because there is that need, so.
That was my question. Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Ah.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning.
Uh, the first item is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash seventy-nine. This is for vacation of utility and drainage use, or portion thereof, in the backyard at two nineteen. We do have an exhibit. Uh, the gentlemen are bringing that up. There we go. Um, and this is on Coach Lamp Drive. Uh, a good portion of their backyard is, is in a utility and drainage use. They want to install a pool. You can see that cross-hatched area. That's what we are asking you to vacate. Um, everybody has signed off. We're asking for your approval this evening.
May to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President, I'm sorry. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Ah.
Now Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Your next item is resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventy-five dash R, and this is asking you to set a public hearing. We don't have any exhibits for this, um, but set up, um, a public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy-six. And this is to amend a section of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to parking requirements for many storage and self-storage, um, facilities. We're asking you to set that public hearing for April twenty-fourth.
May to approve. Second.
Motion second. Ready for vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Ah.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, and Public Works.
I have a couple resolutions tonight. First one is, uh, twenty twenty-three oh nine two R is authorizing street maintenance agreement, excuse me, with the city of Huntsville to be paid from the city's general fund.
May to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
I do have one question. Somebody had asked me whether we have insurance on the poles.
Poles belong to the city of Huntsville. The fixtures belong to us at this time.
Okay, so when they came in and put in the LED lights, they just did the top part, and the poles were as was, and nothing's changed?
They belong to the city of Huntsville, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine. I just had the question, so I asked it.